Yes. Okay, 7:30, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll call Liam Johnston.
Here.
Tom Graffanino.
Here.
Lynn Coligan.
Here.
Lisa Kreckeler.
Yeah.
Phil DiGioia is here. Kylie is present via Zoom. First order of business is to review and approve the November 16th, 2022 minutes.
So what?
Afternoon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we have two applications to discuss. The first is the Keller application, 56A Cartwright Road. I'll open up the floor. We did receive some more correspondence on this from Max Furman. Just started clarifying a few things.
Mention changes.
Well, and since I'm talking about the neighboring lot and because we've discussed the possibility that, you know, the neighboring lot is 13.7 acres and that it could be subdivided and at some point somebody might want to build a house adjacent to this property. And he did point out that there are wetlands that extend into that property and would probably force any construction on that neighboring lot to be a significant distance from the actual property line. So that was the point of his letter. Do we have any discussion on this?
So there'd be a decrease in the setbacks.
They're gonna remove that wooden deck?
That's correct.
They're going from a two to a three bedroom, right? Yes. The first floor, adding the second floor.
Right. They're gonna upgrade the sewage.
Yes, I mean, the wood deck is in the setback and it's almost on the property line, that thing. And so when that's removed, that really increases the conformity of the property quite a bit.
Right.
And it makes the ask, I think, for the other things relatively small in relationship to those. There is a second floor thing where, you know, in general, we have not loved the second floor wall close to the property line. The building department has labeled that intrusion as a de minimis intrusion because it is so very small.
Right. There was something about the roof line. I don't know if anybody had notes on that. I put a question mark about that, something about the ridge height.
It had to do with the existing eve.
Okay.
I don't think that it was.
Nothing's not. Yeah. I think it was like a one foot difference planned for the second floor.
You know, they are adding a little dining area on the first floor. And they are adding a deck on the backside of the house there where there'll be a little bit of an intrusion into the setback.
Very small.
But again, it seems, you know, compared to the deck that's there now, it's a minimal intrusion. Anybody have any other input on this?
Yeah, I mean, the variances are asked for is 1.3 feet and a 1.6. But they're very minimal, especially when you consider they're getting rid of that big wooden deck.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think it makes sense where they're put it, where they are asking for that, that small variance because it kind of, it squares up the, like, the deck in the front. It makes it square. It's not, you know, to have them push that in a little bit.
Yeah.
It wouldn't make sense, I don't think.
Unless they did it on both sides and then so small.
Then the thing is that, you know, they get a straight line for the house.
Yeah.
Really, it's minimal intrusion compared to what is
Yeah.
What's happening now.
Anybody else have any other input?
Tech list?
No. Are we ready to go to the tech list on this? Is that all right?
Yep.
So this has been required two area variance and a special permit for increasing the
Am I it today?
You're always gonna be
Always it? You're our scribe.
You're the girl daddy.
You remember?
I'm just like the Wonder Ball. I'm so hazard of being an English show.
Okay, so we'll do the area variance first. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
I would say no.
Say no as well. Let's get a why, huh? Punch, why will that?
Because they're bringing it more in code.
Okay.
And they're gonna be doing a new septic system too.
New septic system, okay.
So they're bringing everything up to code.
I also think it'll, the removal of the existing deck will be a desirable change.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think even adding that second story, there's other houses along there that have two stories, so it's not
Yes.
Not out of character for the neighborhood.
Yep. And the, I mean, the intrusion of the second story, I think it was 11 square feet. All right. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? I do not see how you would put an addition on that house to square up the house or whatever without, without doing this. So I'm gonna say no.
Um, the addition requires the square up of the house?
Yeah, I mean, I just think it makes sense
Yeah.
of the design there.
Okay.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
No, it's 1.3 foot and 1.6. Very minimal. And I have, my numbers could be off, but I have, it's 20 square feet of the deck is
Is it 1.3 feet or one?
It's one.
Three inches.
It's 1.3 feet.
Okay, and 1.6 feet.
Yeah.
And how much of the deck is being removed?
So, yeah.
So what, they're saying that there's gonna be 20 square feet of deck in the setback, but that 10 square feet of it is existing already. So it's gonna be 10 new square feet.
Yep.
And then
And to remove the old deck is 538 square feet.
Right.
So it's a
What's the net on the, on the deck? 10, 10?
10.
Yeah.
10 new.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the first floor is gonna have 38 square feet and that's 24 square feet of that is already existing.
Okay.
That's an addition on either side. Yeah. Mm-hmm. All right. Whether the variance would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No, it'd be better with a new septic, won't it?
Yes. So, yeah. If the house will have to become dark skies compliant as well. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? I'm gonna say yes, just because they want to build up on there and square off the house. I mean, that's all self-created if
Right.
At this point.
So they're, but they're adding a second floor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, and then move on to the special permit.
Do we have any conditions on the back?
I'm not
I don't have any.
Seeing anything that needs conditioning for me anyway. Anybody else?
No, no.
Okay, just checking.
Is the proposed use the most appropriate use of this land? Say yes.
Yeah.
Residential?
Yeah.
Will the use be detrimental to surrounding property values? No, it's continuing to the same use. Will the use cause an overcrowding of land or undue concentration of population? No.
Yeah.
Is the site suitable for the location of such use in the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Its own residential. Is the proposal harmonious with the character of the existing and probable development of uses in the vicinity?
Yes.
Yes, because a lot of two-story houses around the neighborhood.
Is the proposed use accessible for fire and other emergency apparatus? I mean, it's not gonna get any worse. Is the proposed use unreasonably near a church, school, theater, recreational area or other place of public assembly? No. Will the proposed use interfere with established uses in the neighborhood? No.
No.
Are the driveways and sidewalks adequate to ensure the public safety and avoid traffic congestion? Say yes. Sidewalks are really not applicable in that area.
No.
Environmental concerns, are there adequate facilities for the treatment, removal or discharge of sewage, rafe use or other effluent from this use?
There will be.
There will be a new septic system, an updated, modern system.
And they gotta put drywalls in.
Yeah. Well, the
Run off.
Will the proposed use cause odors, dust, light, noise? And if so, how can the impact be minimized? I think that the use will not cause any of those things. Will the proposed use impact the aquifer and other important natural resources? And if so, how can they be protected? I think they're being protected by a new IA system.
Right.
Is the lot big enough for the proposed use and its reasonable anticipated operation and expansion? Yes. It's, you know, we're getting sort of net away from intrusion into the setback here. Is there enough off-street parking for employees or visitors? And is parking laid out in a convenient and safe way? I don't think this is applicable. It's residential property. What buffers and screening are necessary to protect adjacent properties and land uses? I don't think there's anything needed
No.
that's there. All right. All right, so I guess we will reconvene on this next week and
Do we mention anything to close it?
Very. All right, so The next order of business is the application for 78 North Cartwright Road. Just got a couple more correspondence on this. Updated letter. We've got a letter from Robert Rosebarn, an email, supporting the application. We've got a letter from the Levensteins. We spoke, Ms. Levenstein spoke at our hearing. Just of their letter is that if we request the applicant to move the structure in further from the property line there, it's in the setback, it would be coming in and come closer to their property and that would be worse for that. And then we also got another follow-up letter from the applicants discussing the number of properties around their neighborhood structures in the setback that appear to be principal or secondary residences.
We can't know, right, if they have sleeping quarters though? It says they appear.
Right, that's, you know, he didn't provide that information. You know, I did look at some of these on the Shelter on GSI, G I S, and took a drive-by. What I did find is most of them are very old houses that were built in the setback long before zoning code was applicable here.
Maybe on Hudson Avenue, right?
Yeah, and on Cartwright, there's
There's a couple.
Two, 70.
Yeah.
There's a few.
Yeah.
And they, they also discussed a few other properties that have gotten actual variances from us. And I think 29 East Brander, 14 Peconic and 70 Tuttle. And, you know, those places did in fact get variances from us. There's no, you know, that's
I don't see it.
The, you know, each and every case, I think, you know, has to be judged on merit. And you know, the, I think, the one thing, I think, that came up and I think that everybody, I think, sort of thought might be a reasonable request would be to move the building in so that the pool, so that this exterior wood deck that's shown outside of it would actually be put up adjacent to the pool and sort of become a pool deck. And that way you could sneak the house in another six feet, something like that.
They did address that in the letter.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
It said we would still need a variance.
That's correct.
The changed location would adversely affect our property to the extent that would deprive us of a portion of the benefit we are seeking.
Yeah, I, I'm unsure of the hardship of having to move it in a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, the, I, I don't know, I, it's, it's hard for me to see how moving it in a little bit is, is, is very negative for them. I'm willing to listen to anybody's input on this because maybe I have it wrong.
I'm more of the mindset that there is an existing structure there. If they were coming and asking and saying, we want to put it here instead of, you know, from the get-go, putting it in more, I'd say, eh, if you're, let's bring it in since there's nothing existing there already. In my mind, there's something there already. They want to improve it. I don't, I don't think the extra couple feet is gonna make or break the property and make or break this situation. I don't know if it's
It's a total tear down.
Yeah, but there's already a building there, so it's not like they're not asking, they're not coming to us with no building and saying, we want to put it here. Then I would have more of an issue with it, but since it's already there, I don't know if, you know, it's worth bringing in a couple feet, just especially with the way the property is laid out. It, it makes it more concentrated on the property.
The deck is so big, the front deck.
Yeah.
The, I mean, that size could also be altered.
Right, that's true. Yeah, that's another option.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The the, I agree with you, Lisa, for the most part. The, where I disagree with you a little bit, and it's not a deal killer for me, is that they are increasing the footprint a little bit.
Yeah.
And they're going up.
Yeah.
And
That I get too, yeah.
If, if we were saying, you know, we're gonna stay right in this same footprint, not gonna get any
Taller.
Taller or bigger, yeah.
Bigger.
And I would be, I would go say more or less 100% of the time, I would, you know, be, be good with something like that unless it was some sort of underlying problem with it. But here it is getting a little bigger. And like I said, it's not a deal killer for me necessarily. If, if the consensus is that people want to, you know, allow this, that's, I will go along with it.
No, that is a good point, that it is a little bit of an increase.
I mean, there's, there's some legitimacy to that. But, you know, they are trying to be thoughtful. I do think that they are trying to be good neighbors in that, you know, they are adding a second story, but the roof's only going up seven and a half feet.
I mean, like they also, because we asked, you know, if they had thought of any alternatives and looking at the property, yeah, they could put this in a conforming spot in the front lawn.
Right.
So for, for them to kind of keep it
But that's not helping the character of the neighborhood.
Correct.
No.
Absolutely not.
But they wouldn't need a variance from us for that.
Right.
No.
The, I, you know. What about you, Tom? How are you feeling on this?
Wasn't there talk of it going towards the deck more?
Of pushing to push it in? And that's what Punch brought that up and
They didn't like that idea.
They didn't like it.
That way, right? I'd say if that was the way to get it done.
Just to decrease the, the amount of the variance, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. And it's more feasible having a deck up the edge of your pool than having a grass strip. You get out of the pool, you got wet feet. If the lawn were just mowed a day or so before, you're gonna be bringing grass up on the deck.
Did they state why they didn't want to move it forward?
Jesse just stated he, he didn't want to move it.
I, I, I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's for the for their view.
Yeah, I believe that's what it was, Mr. Chairman, like the aesthetics of looking out from the main house.
Right, that's right.
And, and the whole Feng Shui of the backyard. And then, again, you have the neighbor, if you're moving it closer to the pool, it's gonna negatively impact the neighbor on the other side. So those are just considerations you should take into account.
Right, I would say this, Stephen, that the neighbor on the other side of the property, who is gonna be 80 or 100 feet from the
Yeah.
The structure, it's
Material.
I think it's, it's not really gonna factor into our discussion here, as far as I can tell. You know, I, I understand you want to keep your space as open as possible. And how do you do that? By keeping your structures as close to the perimeter as possible. And so, you know, I'm
It's a tough one because
Did, did the board go out there to take a look from the vantage point that the applicant was saying would be impacted? Like, did you get a chance to go to the backyard and see what he's talking about?
From the main house back?
Yeah.
No, I did not.
Yeah, he's got some windows there in the back of the house.
Yeah, so I, like, you don't have to make a decision. Like, you could put it off and if you wanted to take a, a trip and go, I'm sure the applicant wouldn't mind if the board came out, if you're on the fence about it, to see what he's really talking about.
I was there as well. I know you were there, Punch.
Yeah, I was there.
I've taken a look at it.
Yeah.
I, you know.
If it wasn't
Total, there, the extent of the variance then, in terms of numbers?
Well, it's big. It's, because if you look, you look here. See, here's, here's the actual setback.
Yeah.
So three quarters of the building is gonna be in the setback.
Right.
Right.
It's just so much free space there.
It's 14.8 feet
Yeah.
More.
You know, I I'll, you know, like I said, if the consensus is everyone feels like, hey, we should, we should allow this because it makes the most sense going here, I'm willing to go along with that. If the consensus is, you know what, it's, you know, instead of having three quarters of the building in the setback, we're gonna have less than half the building in the setback, you know, I will go along with that as well. Yeah, I
They're putting in a new foundation, right?
Yes.
This is, this is a completely new structure.
Oh, no. Totally no. I can't see where six feet would make that much difference of his view. If you plant a bush, some people plant trees and you ain't gonna see it out your window. They get bigger.
Well, so you're erring on the side of having them move it up a little bit.
Yeah, I'm toward moving it six feet closer to the pool.
I know, I'm toward too.
Because it's a total tear down. And he does have room. I'm not saying you gotta put it up against the pool. I'm just saying six feet will help it to minimize the variance you have to brand them. I think he should move it halfway if he really wants it. My opinion. He can do it. He's just being stubborn.
Oh. He wants
He wants
He wants
He wants his tank either too.
Right, he doesn't want to obliterate the deck.
Right.
Right, right.
And I also get the where it sits right now. Why come in from, why, why change that exact footing? However, because it is a complete tear down, it's, there's a lot to juggle here. I truly believe it's gotta be a little bit of give and take. It's gotta be a little bit of movement on, on the other end too. And I, I see the piece of how
The sightlines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I totally get that.
When you're there, it does, it feels like there is plenty of space there, you know, with the bit of grass before the deck and the deck is so large and then the structure, it does feel like there is wiggle room there.
Did we have numbers on, on how big that deck is coming out the front, the length of it?
We don't actually have a dimension.
We didn't have the dimension of that. But Punch, you said you measured between the pool building and the
Yeah, it was, it was almost, huh?
I think I wrote down 16 feet.
I'm trying to think. I forget now. But I know there's room to move at least
I wrote 16 feet
And my guess deck is going to get rebuilt when the house is getting
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The deck. No, that deck is not that great.
So maybe that deck is a little bit smaller if they don't want it cutting up against the pool, like if they want that grass strip there.
Yeah.
I know, it's, I mean, if, do we want to make a decision on this tonight or do we wanna?
Because I think the 16 feet is from the building to the edge of the
The pool. That's what I wrote.
The deck is eight, eight feet.
That looks about right.
Yeah, and it may feel that if you build the structure only eight feet from the pool as opposed to 16 feet, let's say, from the pool, that it feels cramped or looming or
Right. That's why I say six feet.
Just move it in.
Instead of eight feet.
So you'd still be 10 feet away.
Yeah.
I mean, does everybody I mean, does everybody, do you want to go back there with your tape measures and look again? Or do you want to make a decision on this tonight?
I mean, can we make a decision that would require them to move the building closer?
Oh, we could
And so we don't outright deny it.
No, no, we could, we could table this for tonight, and we could approach them and see if they would revise their plans and come back with something that might
Minimize the extent of the variance?
Yes.
That would make our decision easier.
Would, 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 would you like us to do that?
I think, because we're at a little bit of scale.
I think I'd like to take Stephen's idea, I'd like to go back and look at it from that way. I mean, I would personally, I would
Sure, it's going to block some of the view for that one window. Two windows in the back.
So do we want to make a request of them, or do we want to just go and, and take a second or a third gander?
I mean, I think it's always good to involve the applicant, especially when he was so amenable when we came, you know, showing us exactly what his vision was. So I do think we should involve him.
Okay, and, and what, what type of involvement do you envision?
Well, you, you as the chairman could call him and say, we are kind of at a stalemate, and we can't agree on putting a two-story structure in the existing place, and that we would like some agreement as to the movement of
Or if they want to come back with, you know, like, an alternative that lessens the
That's fine, that's
Mr. Chairman, sorry, the, the hearing is closed, though, so there's a little snafu with that. My suggestion would be, if you just get permission to go out there and take a look, and obviously don't really talk about the substance, but just get another look at the property and then reconvene. You could have a work session before the next, next BA meeting and chat about it then. It's, but you just got to be careful, that you're not really supposed to take any new testimony, so any new comments from the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Stephen, let me ask you a question. If, if, if we were to ask them or to, let's say, after this, say, hey, we can vote on this, and in all likelihood, your, you know, your thing would not be approved, would you care to adjust your plans and, and resubmit so that we could perhaps find a, something that's amenable to everyone here?
You, you can, you know, grant alternative relief. They don't have to particularly ask for it. So you're more amenable, you know, so. But I think in this particular case, if you're on the fence and you need more, I, I heard certain members said it would need more information to make a decision. I would either put the decision off, and you can also have the option of asking the applicant to reopen the hearing. So there's that. But it, it's really up to you, you, you have options. And at the end of the day, you can grant the request or grant amended relief.
Okay. So we can reopen the hearing anytime we want to, as long as we need to have this vote.
You mean, like, reopen it in January?
And when I come back, but
Or we could just take a field trip out there and not discuss it.
I would say this, why don't we just, everybody go out there this week? We'll table this until, we'll have a work session prior to our, opening our first hearing next, next week. All right, does that make sense? Yes?
Yeah.
Stephen, does that work?
Yeah, and, and also you may want to talk to the building inspector about because, you know, it is, the, the structure is adjoining, well, not immediately joining the pool, but it's, you got the, the structure, the deck. And so, you know, the building inspector might prefer that it be further away from closer. So that might be also something you may want to consider for safety purposes.
Right, we certainly can ask him what the minimum distance between is. I don't know what that number is, but I have a feeling it's smaller than 16 feet. Bigger than zero feet.
Concern as far as the foundation, or?
No, just, I think the concern would be a, a safety thing where people trying to squeeze between the house and, and the pool might be falling in there or something. So, can, we don't have to vote to table this, is that right, Stephen?
Um, no, this is a work session, so it's just
Okay, we're just going to table it, we're going to have a work session prior to our first hearing next week.
Okay.
You think we should come in 15 minutes early?
Yeah, we can do it as part of the
All right. Because we've got two new applications.
Yeah.
They could be quite long.
Yes, hopefully they won't be. All right, I don't think we have any other business here tonight. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Who?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's second it?
Lynn.
Lynn.
Lynn.